Welcome to the City of University Heights. This is our October fourteenth city council meeting. Thanks everyone for attending. We have Doug and Tim and Lisa here tonight. And so that's a quorum. And Nick is away at his son's special meeting and he might make it in a little while. We'll see. And so approval of minutes is the first order of business. The minutes were circulated by Mike. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. And then we'll go to comments from the public. Anyone from the public like to speak tonight to the council? Come on up to the, thank you. And can you give your name and address?
My name is Ryan Rankhor. I live on two fifty Marietta Avenue. And I just have a few just kind of questions almost about the sidewalk repair program.
Oh.
Um, because I know we got the letter, you know, about.
What? Your address is on Marietta?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Um, so my house is currently three tiles that are up for replacement or something that I've, I'm in the process of trying to kind of find my own bid, just to kind of get a price, kind of see what, what, what the price would be. And one contractor that came out, he kind of made the comment about how, you know, he could replace the three that are marked, but there's a good chance that he would have to do other ones because of just of how they are. And, and his comments were really the whole sidewalk and the entire street needed to be replaced. Like that was his opinion.
I see.
Um, so I was just curious if like, when you guys were doing your assessment, if that ever came up of, you know, maybe having the city replace the entire link. Um, because even walking down it, you can see like some that weren't marked, but it's kind of curious on why they weren't like there's, you know, and I, I know there's specific measurements for like how much of a, of a wedge and everything that be exposed. I suppose it was probably just under, but there's a bunch that look like they could be
Sure.
that weren't marked, you know, and then to hear his comment about how, how, um, you know, he thinks the whole thing should just be replaced.
Well, thank you for coming tonight to fight. We have our city engineer tonight, Ryan Foley. Have you spoke to him?
I have not, yes.
Okay. But Ryan can give you a little bit right now to.
Yeah. So, uh, we've talked with council for a long time on this. Um, we've kind of come and had, there's been a lot of discussion over the last year, year and a half, maybe, uh, along that timeline, leading up to the inspections and the, uh, letters going out of how to address certain things and, and, obviously when we have full reconstruction projects, uh, like some that have happened on Hall of Court or on Gulfview Avenue in recent years where there are sidewalks, there's, uh, been some complete reconstruction of the sidewalk. The, the difference here is where we're trying to eliminate hazards, just more generally throughout the whole town. The, the council and the city doesn't really have the money to fund like a full city rebuild out of the sidewalks. So, um, that would, that would occur as a more like project specific block by block kind of thing. Um, and might only be if it needs it, right? Um, if their sidewalks don't need to be reconstructed, they might not be with the road work, but um, I'd say that I can come look at the specific, uh, property, um, to do like a second review of it, if you'd like me to. Um, I had, um, other staff in our office do the inspections. So, and I have photos filed, so I can look at those too. So, the other thing I'd say is, I, I mean, it's pretty easy for a concrete contractor to say, hey, this whole sidewalk.
I, I have another one tomorrow and I have a couple others. So I'll see what other, other places.
And without looking at it, I don't really know the context of what he meant by that.
Yeah. And for like mine, I definitely, they can, they need to be replaced. So I'm not disputing that. It was just the overall idea of it. Um, and the other question I had just in terms of the, when you guys pick your contractor, um, or go through that bidding process, um, if we sign on with that, um, is there any say at all? Do we get any say in the, like, like, once you get down to like the last couple, or is it you guys just choose outright?
For, I'm sorry, for the contract?
Yeah, for the city, like if we went and opted into the city one.
Yeah. So the city has to take a little bit. That's just how, how we do, we operate with government bid process.
So regardless, so.
It would just be, they, they would have to be like a non-responsible bidder or a known.
Okay. And I think that was the word I got tripped up on a little bit, like, because it was lowest responsible. So I wasn't sure about.
It'd have to be somebody that's kind of got a record or a history or that we are aware of, or, uh, if we contact another city and they've had issues with this contractor not fulfilling the requirements of the contracts and things of that nature, or having issues with the quality of the work. I would say that that rarely happens, I guess. Uh, you know, it's, it takes a significant amount of work conduct to get onto a list like that. So.
Um, and then just one other question kind of pop of that. When you have your contractor, when you pick your contractor, if he goes through and like, so like mine has three marked, if he goes and like, is like, we need to do more than just the three, like the only way we can get the three is if we adjust some of the other ones. Hold that, because like right now, like I'm just required to do the three.
Yeah. Um, okay. So it sounds like you're describing a situation where there may be spaced out and you're thinking some in between need to be done in order to correct those.
Yeah.
Um, that would be something I guess that I'd have preferred to look at, I guess, if that was a question first. So, um, uh, normally we'd want to mark the minimum amount that needs to be done. So, uh, that's what I was hoping was being done when we were doing our inspections. So if that came up, um, and it had to be field adjusted upon bid, like say you never came here and that came up in the field, um, I'd probably have to talk with you, see if you're willing to just go ahead and pay for those. If not, I think if we felt it was necessary, then I'd probably say that recommend the city, just go ahead and make those cost repairs. So in that scenario, it'd be sort of like a compromise, right?
Yes. Yeah. And that question was just basically, again, the contractor that came up for me, he kind of was thinking like, oh, if we adjust these, then I might have to adjust this one to that, you know?
Yeah. And that can be the tricky part about spot repairs. Uh, I mean, because sometimes it, it can be like, well, yeah, there's this or that. But we're usually looking at it from a lens of we're, we're talking about people's personal money. And so we're trying to like sort of reduce Yeah. the limits, right? It would be different if we were talking about a, a full reconstruction project and we're like, yeah, well, let's do this, right? We're, we're going to do it right. But we want to do this right and mark them up, the minimum that's needed, um, to make a fix that's reliable, um, and fairly long-term. But with sidewalks, the weather and freestyle and winters through Iowa is, it's like you, you could make a fix in the next year. It's the same spot could be impacted. So it's really, that's because the mass isn't there like the street has, um, and your driveway has. So, I mean, there can be a lot of variation pretty quickly. So.
Um, and then just last question, and I'm pretty sure it probably does really matter, but I know our property is the very end of the sidewalk. So we don't get on foot traffic, but I suppose that doesn't matter. Like if they needed fixing, they, it, no matter the traffic.
It's a dead end.
Uh, so like, um, the sidewalk ends at my neighbor's driveway and then there's no sidewalk that connects to Sunset.
This is up at the Iowa City end, then where do the cul-de-sac side?
Uh, no. So it's.
Near Sunset.
Yeah, the apartment. So, so, um,
Yeah.
our sidewalk ends and then, um, there's two houses and then Sunset.
Okay.
It's over here. Yes. Yep. So like ours is, ours is the third house from sub, from Sunset. There's no sidewalk in front of the last two. It's on Marietta.
Yeah. I think we had a similar scenario that I engaged the city on where there was a property on a cul-de-sac in town that had sidewalk and then there's no sidewalk on either side of it pretty much. And, uh, the consensus was that if you've got sidewalk, it needs to be repaired because anybody could walk up and use that space because it's in the public's right area. So, um, I think that would, but I think that's the question you have.
Yeah. Yep. And that's kind of what I thought I just wanted to, just.
Um, as far as if it's that close to sunset, there's potential that there's going to be, I guess, I don't know. Those properties on the corner have a great issue, don't they? Turns to on.
Yeah, it's pretty dilly, uh, on their property.
Yes. I don't want to make a promise that we're connecting that when it's probably like rotating laws, right?
Yeah. And I kind of with it, it's kind of hard to, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I can come on and take a look. I took a note. It's the two fifty Marietta, you said.
Yes. Yeah. All right. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So did you sign in?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. And thanks, Ryan.
Yeah.
For, uh, that. And then we'll go on to mayor's report. And first we have consideration of resolution twenty five, twenty eight. And this is accepting the resignation of council member Stephanie Gunn, effective ten fourteen, twenty twenty five. And you know, she, um, sent a letter to the mayor, council and staff on September eighteenth and resigning. And so is there a motion? Motion by Lisa second? Second by Tim. Okay. Discussion. Roll call vote.
Uh, Moore.
Aye.
Schroeder.
Aye.
Swales.
Aye.
Herbold absent. Carrie's three zero one absent.
Thank you. And Steve will give more during his report. Uh, so one move on to, we have Maggie Burger here, but I don't see.
She's come. Oh, sorry.
I just thought I, I.
Maggie's here.
See her.
Call on free.
Hi Maggie.
Hello there.
Burger, for the audience who doesn't know, Maggie Burger is a senior vice president for Spear Financial in Waterloo. And she and her staff have helped the city, our city through many bond issues. And she's here tonight to discuss uh, bonding of, uh, the Melrose Complete Street and also possibly the Swisher, uh, Swisher Track Trails Project.
Yes.
Thank.
Thank you, everyone. I'm Maggie. As, as the mayor had said, um, I'm going to start and talk a little bit about, and I'm looking at my other screen here. So, so bear with me, but I'm going to start and talk a little bit about, uh, the Melrose Complete, the street, uh, the Complete Street Project. So as we've been talking with your engineer, um, that project is, is essentially being split, we'll say into two phases. Uh, first phase probably happening or starting now or, or in the very near future. Second phase probably starting the end of twenty twenty six and in through the summer of twenty seven. That first phase of the project, um, includes things like Melrose easements, utility, uh, relocation, driveway relocations, um, panel replacements, um, and then the complete streets and engineering costs related to the second phase of the project. Uh, altogether, and then we, we also had on that list Oak Crest Sewer Intakes. Altogether, your need is about one million, four hundred and sixty seven thousand, five hundred dollars for all of those items. Um, we are suggesting that the city would move forward with a bond issue after many discussions amongst everyone, a bond issue at this time of about one million, five hundred thousand dollars. From a timing perspective, what we'd like to see happen there is, um, we would have the city set a date of public hearing at your November meeting. You'd hold a public hearing and this is on the borrowing itself, because these are essential corporate purpose, meaning that it's just a vote of the council. There is no referendums, no reverse referendums, anything like that. This is, uh, infrastructure, utilities, um, street water sewer, you know, anything like that related. So we would have you set a date of public hearing on November eleventh, hold the public hearing at your December meeting. Uh, you at your January meeting would approve the official statement. We likely would ask that you have a special meeting the last week of January. And I'll send all this over to you, but that last week of January, whether it was on the twenty sixth or normal day for you guys, like the twenty seventh, which is a Tuesday, that meeting would, could be virtual. That meeting would take ten, maybe fifteen minutes at the most, and it would have one resolution that just awards the bonds. We need to have about two weeks in between that January thirteenth date of your meeting to approve the document that we would use to sell the bonds with, and then have that bond sale that day, which locks in the interest rates. And then you would use your regular February meeting to do all the authorizing and issuance documents or which is really just filled in all the blanks. And then you'd have money at the end of February. It's not that you can't start spending money now on these projects that we discussed because you can. Um, and you, you can just reimburse yourself the day that those funds come in at the end of February. So, so that's our first suggestion is that we would move forward, getting that work done. That doesn't require, you know, our plan for this is you could use a debt service levy because they would be general obligation bonds. We have, um, noted though, in, in some of the stuff that we've talked about is that we could use some local option sales tax revenue. We also could use some hotel motel tax revenue. Um, if we wanted to, you're not utilizing all of those funds, although we're identifying those funds as future project funds for not only the, the complete Melrose reconstruction, um, but also we'll talk a little bit about that when we get to the Swisher Tract as well. So this is, it, this is, we'll say phase one. Um, we would not suggest then that you go and borrow the money for phase two, um, which is really the reconstruction of the street itself. We don't think you should borrow that money until you have a bid letting on that project. And the real reason is, is we don't want you to borrow too much. You know, if there are leftover funds in, in this bond issue, let's say you have fifty thousand dollars left over because everything comes in a little less than anticipated, you can use that fifty thousand towards the Melrose Complete Street Reconstruction. We don't want you to have too many funds on hand, um, after that second or that phase two, because it's really related to streets, you know, water sewer, electric, um, you know, all the things related sidewalk related to that project. So it would be our suggestion that, you know, that bond issue probably is a year out, um, as well. It could be as, as early as late fall, um, after bid letting, but it probably more likely is in the same timeframe in twenty, uh, twenty seven, uh, that you would be probably issuing debt sometime in those spring months of twenty seven, as that project kicks off and gets underway. Again, after we have a pretty good idea from the bid letting, what that is and what you want to have as a contingency, things like that. If that makes any sense. Are there any questions about Melrose and us wanting to start phase one as the borrowing right now? Okay. So the other conversation that we've been having is the Swisher Tract. Uh, the city has, uh, you know, been approached, I think, and, and had long conversations with groups of people about making some trails, um, on that Swisher Tract. So through some conversations, we've talked about what your options are. So just so everyone knows, trail projects, um, are not what we would consider essential corporate purpose in the eyes of, of the state of Iowa, which truly means that, you know, as, as in purchasing that land, it's a general corporate purpose. And that could force an election um, to do any borrowing above the amount of five hundred and thirty four thousand, forty dollars. That is, that's the limitation that you can borrow against right now with what we call a reverse referendum public hearing. And that really means you would put a public notice out there, citizens could, you know, file a petition to say, we don't really want you to borrow this money that way. Uh, there is another option that is available to us, and that would be using the urban renewal law to make this an essential, um, purpose, an essential corporate purpose project, because urban renewal projects are essential. Uh, the urban renewal process is, is fairly simple. Um, with the exception that we know some of this property, uh, we believe sits in the city limits of Iowa City. So we think that, you know, we just have to do a little extra work with your bonding attorney, the Dorsey and Whitney firm, just to strategize and, and lay that out. But what that would allow us to do is borrow for that entire amount, um, under the urban renewal law. Now, trails don't produce TIF revenue, right? So you're not going to use TIF revenue, uh, to pay for this debt because there are, there's, there's nothing coming um, in, in new tax dollars from, from a trail project. But what you would and could use is local option sales tax, um, which has been something that we've identified before. You also could use a little debt service levy, and that really will be determinate on how the city wants to, um, finance the Melrose Complete Streets. You know, we believe you've got enough debt dropping off. Um, your debt service levy could go down slightly in the future. So our goal would be to stabilize that levy and not have that levy go down and go ahead and, and wrap some new debt around that existing debt that's there. But also it would, it would probably take a little bit more than you're using right now of your hotel motel tax and your local option sales tax receipts. Um, so that we could do phase one, phase two of Melrose and, um, the Swisher Tract, uh, projects, uh, the trail project through that. Um, with, with doing, uh, the urban renewal law, again, it just takes some steps by the city of some urban renewal work. Um, but this, we believe is, is truly an economic development project. And that's what the, the, the urban renewal law is written for, is for what types of urban renewal projects that you can do to bring economic development to your community. Um, and we think that, you know, by putting in a trail system, that is something that we've seen justified before. And we believe that bond council would have no issues justifying, um, a trail project as, um, an essential corporate purpose with regards to the urban renewal law. So, uh, with that, I'd answer any questions on that. We also, you know, we could start that work probably in January. Uh, you know, in that really, we wouldn't want to, to have you issue that debt, um, until you had a bid letting in hand on that. So depending on where that stands with that project, we can do a lot of the initial work, uh, with the, with regards to the urban renewal work, get that out of the way in the next few months, and then wait until you actually have a bid letting, because again, we don't want to have you overborrow for that project. Um, I could see that project, you know, depending on timing, it could be borrowing at the same time as your Melrose, you know, phase two project, if, if that's where we think the timing is on that project. Um, that's, that's a conversation more with, with the engineer, um, and the city on that project. But you know, we, if we do do a borrowing that combines two projects, we will always give you a breakout schedule that shows you this was project A, you know, maybe Melrose, and this was project B, which is the Swisher Tract. And, and then that way you know what the repayment sources were that we've identified, discussed and decided, uh, would be best going forward on each of those. Any questions for me?
Are you going to talk about the process, Maggie, for urban renewal?
Yep, I can do that. That's not a problem. So the urban renewal process is, um, at step one is we would have a phone call with, um, uh, the city with Dorsey and Whitney. Uh, Dorsey and Whitney would probably, uh, have some paperwork that we would need to work with the city of Iowa City on. Um, just again, allowing us to come into their city limits to extend this TIF area in there. Um, I, you know, I think that the city of Iowa City probably understands urban renewal law enough that they are probably fully aware of, of what that ask would be. Uh, we would work with them and this, and, and the city, you know, we would work with both of you to, to accomplish getting that agreement in place. Once that agreement is in place, uh, we would have the city, it's, it's setting the date of public hearing on establishing a new urban renewal area. So there would be an urban renewal area directly related just to this trail project. That urban renewal area would, um, not only identify the, the actual project, um, description itself, like legal description, where it's at. You know, are, you know, what, what it's going through, are we identifying it by streets, things like that. But that project, that plan amendment or plan would also identify the amount that, you know, we would borrow as a not to exceed amount. So again, not knowing what that amount may be, we may put that number a little bit higher than what we think the borrowing probably would be. You then have to have a consultation with the city, uh, with the county and the school district. Uh, you would invite them. This is all documents that bond council provides. They don't come to a public meeting like you're having. It is a private meeting that's usually held during the daytime at city hall. It's very rare that the county and the school show up, but you have to invite them. If they do not show up, um, you know, ten minutes into the meeting, the meeting is over. Um, again, it's just to inform them what your plan is for establishing this urban renewal plan and, and why you're doing that. Once you get through that consultation, you would be able to hold the public hearing on the urban renewal plan. That then gives you the authority to set a date of public hearing on an actual borrowing amount, just like we're talking about for this first phase of Melrose, you know, using our November and our December meeting dates. We would use future meeting dates after that urban renewal work is done to hold that public hearing on the borrowing itself. And then again, I would suggest that, you know, you might get through that step, and then there might be a gap in time where we sit and wait, um, and we don't do the issuance until, you know, we have a bid letting and we know what that project cost is going to be. And, and then we would bid let at that, or we would have the bond sale at that time. So I would say you've got probably, you know, um, for the urban renewal work, it's, it's probably a, I would say at least a sixty to ninety day process for just the urban renewal work. And that's because we've got some additional agreements that have got to get discussed with the city of Iowa City. Um, because you're, you know, you'd be coming into their city limits just to establish an urban renewal area. Again, it's bare land that's not generating any TIF right now, um, for them. We don't, and we do not believe that it sits in its, in its own TIF district. We believe this is, uh, maybe campus property. So, um, it, it's probably, you know, not even being taxed. And so we just don't see that there, there may be, we don't believe there would be a lot of pushback, um, by establishing that urban renewal area that way.
And as I told you, Maggie, in our meeting, we had this council chambers was filled with residents who wanted to have the council move this project forward of the trails project. So the council then voted unanimously to move it forward. And as I told you, I think we have uh, residents who are really back, a lot of residents backing this project. And that's why I think this way it could work.
Yep. So if, you know, I mean, we, we, we can get started with bond council and start having those discussions sooner rather than later to talk about, you know, how we go about getting agreements with Iowa City in place. Um, again, it'll take sixty to ninety days likely for that urban renewal work, but we're not in, in a, in a super big rush to borrow that money because again, we don't, I feel, I don't think we have a final design, um, on what that, uh, trail project would look like. We might not have, we may have a, a basic cost estimate, but as you get into a final design, usually, um, you get a, a more clear cost estimate on, on what, you know, we think that that's going to cost in today's market.
So is the goal to get grant funding though? So we were, I mean, the idea would be to get maybe even half of it funded by grants.
Yeah.
If we're matching that, and if it's less than a million dollars, we can borrow up to the five hundred and thirty four thousand and forty dollars.
Yeah. I mean, tho- those are all the, those are all the questions that, you know, we have. What would the timing look like on this project? Because again, we don't want you to go through any unnecessary steps that you have to. Um, if you were to acquire grant funding, we love grant funding, right? It's free money. So, you know, then you just borrow less and, and then yes, at that point, maybe you're able to just borrow under the threshold of the five hundred and thirty four thousand for a general corporate purpose. So, um, I think those are.
That's due to our population, that number. It's from one to.
It is from zero to, um, five hun- five thousand people.
Five thousand.
Limitation, five thousand. Now, that number is the twenty twenty five threshold, five thirty four. Um, the number in twenty four was five twenty. There's a CPI increase that the state built in. This is the only part of House File seven eighteen that, that I was a super big fan of, but, um, it does increase um, that number every year, and it does increase that on January first. So within here, you know, sixty five, seventy days, we're going to know if that number goes up. I would assume that number's going to go up, but it's not going to go up to like eight hundred thousand. It might go up to maybe five fifty, maybe five forty, something like that. But, but it would give you a little bit more, um, room in there if you were able to get some grant funding and, and not go the urban renewal route.
And we don't know the exact cost until the bidding, right?
Well, you, you don't know the exact cost. Yeah. You aren't going to know the exact cost, but once you have an engineer engaged in doing a final design, they're going to give you a probable cost estimate, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, they're going to, I mean, and as that design, and, and I don't know that you have a final design, maybe you do, but as you get closer to that final design, you know, they're utilizing, um, the costs of asphalt or concrete right now. You know, what is that costing for the linear feet that you're going to be using? You know, what is that costing for the linear feet that you're gonna be using um, that for? So so there, you know, that final design, as you get closer to that bid letting, usually that that number, I think, I think gets a little honed in on. Because you, you know, y- they've done all of their kind of work and estimates based on what the market is is at.
Well, Tim, I think we have a pretty good number from the this company, right?
Yeah.
It's probably a pretty good number.
So I think your your next step is to discuss grant funding. Um, we are not a a company that has um, any expertise in grant writing. Um, that is not something, but you can use your local COGS. Um, you also may have people, I would assume at the university, um, that potentially are grant writers and could help out. Um, with that sort of thing, we know, I know, you know, being in Waterloo, we know that we have groups of of people like that at U N I. That help out with some of the communities in the area for some grant funding.
Think Iowa City was gonna do that for us.
Perfect.
Grant funding and fundraising.
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
Fundraising is part of it too.
Yeah. So I think, again, this project, we're just gonna, I mean, we wanna talk about it. I think the ways that we pay for it are local option sales tax, whatever the borrowing size is. Um, and potentially hotel motel tax. Um, but I think that, you know, there are some questions that we still need to get answered. Before we we trudge down the path of of this Swisher Tract in the trail system.
Thank you. So we should first, well, we should start with the complete street, Melrose. And I believe you said we set a public hearing in November.
Yeah, in November, so you'll get proceedings. Yeah, you'll get proceedings from Dorsey, and it'll be a resolution that sets the date of public hearing for December ninth. So there's nothing to publish before your November eleventh meeting. All you'll do ahead of November eleventh is get the resolution, put that resolution on the council agenda, take the item. And then from there, part of Dorsey's packet of information will include the notice that would go to the newspaper. And that notice would get published between November's meeting and December's meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
I I told you about Troy Kelsey, our city administrator.
Hi.
Hello there.
Right, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Well, anyway, he's right here and he'll he'll, I'm sure you'll be talking to him too.
Yes.
And as you have with Steve Ballard. But uh, he told me there's there's a meeting that he's going to meet with tomorrow and.
Tomorrow Maggie, I'm meeting with uh, Nick Pfeiffer and Josh Schamberger and then Mike Havercamp regarding uh, funding discussion. On the trail system, so we should have, we should have some more information or at least a more, a better idea of where we are in the process after that meeting.
That would be fantastic, just to, just to know that. We always just keep those items in our files so that we can talk through it. And then we can run debt service schedules at different levels of borrowing. Um, you know, if you think you're gonna get this much fundraising and this much in grants, and you'd have to borrow this much. And and we can run you different scenarios just so that the council can look and see what what those look like.
Right. They were, uh, I know in part wanting a commitment from the city, which I believe the elected officials did give. Uh, and the mayor and I have had a discussion of, again, many of the things that you brought up as far as possible use of the lost funds. Towards that project. So again, we're just trying to iron out some of the details at this point.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions for Maggie? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sounds good. I will send you over, Mayor, the timeline um, with the other items that I think I've sent in the past, but I I'll resend everything over to you this week. That timeline, again, we're probably just looking for a special meeting, maybe the night of January twenty-seventh. Um, that meeting could be anytime actually after one P M. In the afternoon. So if you all said, oh, we just wanna have a fifteen minute at five or four, we can do that. We would just have to have that meeting set up. And so.
We try to use Tuesdays.
Yeah, yeah. And so that is, I think, January twenty-seventh is the last Tuesday. That could be the two weeks out from the bond sale itself, which is re- or from the approval of the O S, which is what we need. So.
Thank you so much, Maggie.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone. Have a good evening.
You too.
Oh, yeah.
A big Hawk fan. We talk Hawkeyes.
We will, we'll be in the stadium this weekend.
University Heights, I hear.
I do tailgate in university.
Famous. No, you're not really. Know you from that.
No, we we do tailgate in your city. I I make that point.
Thank you. Thanks again, Maggie.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, that's great. And uh, let's go on to legal report. And Steve, you wrote a nice legal report. Do you wanna review that or are there questions too for Steve? About some of it, but why don't you just give a little summary?
Yeah, you bet. So with Stephanie's resignation, the uh, the council's typical option is either to uh, set a special election to. Uh, have have a replacement elected or to appoint uh, someone to replace Stephanie. And then if the council appoints, then there's a an opportunity for citizens to uh, I guess protest that. And and compel an election. And and that's the typical uh, approach anytime a uh, a a, an elected official resigns from a seat at a county or state level. There are uh, quite a few rules that relate to um. That process and many of them deal with timing and and some of the, and some of the timing is particularly uh, important here. So you can't have special elections during certain periods, you know, no matter what, no matter what it's for. Because the auditors would be getting ready for a general election, so we would absolutely be in that timeframe if we tried to do something before November four. But more to the point, uh, wh- what, when when we're this close to a regular city election, so November four. The way uh, the law reads, uh, any uh, anyone who's elected. At the next regular election, November four, um, once the the. Once the uh, results of that election are certified, which takes about a week. Then any non-incumbent who's elected will take office immediately. So typically, people who are elected start that term of office on January one, including incumbents. Of course, the incumbents are gonna fill out their normal, normal uh, tenure in in November and December, but then their new term starts January one. But a non-incumbent elected would would normally take office on January one for the first time. But because of the vacancy and because there there is an intervening uh, regular city election. The law says, well, as soon as those, as soon as those results are certified, that person is eligible to be sworn in and will take office. So if the timing works, you know, I don't know if I wanna say perfectly, but the way that we think it will, the the elections on the board. We think that the results will be certified by seven o'clock on the eleven, which is the next regular meeting. And so as the first order of business, uh, not that I get to set the agenda, but my suggestion will be the first order of business. That we swear in the the newly elected non-incumbent um, candidate, which, you know. You tell me, pr- probably, probably, probably sitting among us. Now, th- there are a lot of, there are a lot of intricacies with the with the law, you know. Um, so if if for some reason two non-incumbents are el- or more are elected. Yeah, on November fourth, well, then all the incumbents continue to fill out their term till the end of the, end of the year. But then among the non-incumbents who are elected, it would be the highest or higher, depending on how many, but the the highest vote getter. Would be the one that would be appointed for the rest of the year. And then all of the people elected, whether they're incumbents or non-incumbents, would take, take their regular term uh, of office on uh, December or January one. So nothing really that the council needs to do, nothing really that the council can do. You've accepted Stephanie's resignation. That seat will sit open until the certification of a non-incumbent candidate. Uh, in in um, November. And as I said, uh, y- you know, I I don't think the timing has to be perfect, but it's it's pretty customary that that it'll only take a week. If the, if the results aren't certified until November twelve. Then then the seat will sit vacant uh, and until then, and then and then the the non-incumbent candidate could be, you know, sworn in. And if you have a special meeting in November, then that that person will 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 be seated and if not, the he or she will be seated in December.
And I wanna say Steve is explaining maybe if, uh, several non-incumbents, because there could be a writing campaign. That's possibility, because right now we have one person running for mayor and five people running for council. But if there's a right, that's why you're saying that. I just thought I clarified that.
Thank you.
Well, I know a lot about writing. Thought I mentioned.
Remember learning about it myself.
So anyway, any questions for Steve? Thank you for explaining that. And uh, so we'll go on to city administrator report, and Troy, you wrote a very nice report.
That's pretty self-explanatory. I apologize. It went out early this afternoon, and I really don't feel the need to go over anything in detail. Uh, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, or if you, if you peruse it later and and have follow-up questions, please get ahold of me. But uh, pretty straightforward this month.
Yeah, very good, very complete. I wanna say that this past month, I, we had some issues with some houses and different things. And I'm gonna say that it's been very good for the city. I wanna point out that we have Troy as our city administrator. Because in a lot of cases, we use Steve Ballard to write the letter to talk to the person. And it's just been great to have Troy on board so that he can do some of those things. And it's worked well with those addresses and it's worked well, uh, just sending a letter or talking to a resident. And so I just wanted to say that publicly, that that's been working very well.
City staff.
I somehow don't know how to navigate exactly with the city administrator. I'm not exactly. But I love it. I just think maybe I should be doing that. I don't know, you know. But anyway, thanks Troy.
City staff, uh, whether it's Brian, Terry or Ryan are great to work with and and they're great help to me. I hope I'm a little bit of a help to them, so.
Yeah, it's really been helping with Melrose as, you know, with that too. It's saving the city a lot of money there too. Thank you. So if no questions for Troy, we'll go on to city clerk.
Uh, not much to report. I did put in my report after talking about uh, rental permits in the back building at North. We did come to an agreement with and clarified some misunderstanding with Oakdale. And they sent us a check for fourteen rental permits for the fourteen units that Oakdale owns in the back. So that was uh, that was.
Thank you. That was good.
John sees that. John sees that when I do the defense. So.
Yeah. Any questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike. We'll go on to city treasurer, and I see John, you uh, sent around your warrants.
I I did. There's nothing uh. Abnormal with on the warrants. I just pointed out, we have the uh, rest of interest. The bonds wasn't that serious, is gonna come due in December and I just put on the warrants. Now, cuz I don't wanna, it takes time to process. I don't wanna spend any of our interest payments. So that's the only thing unusual about, I I think is unusual about this warrants. I don't wanna follow up to the last uh, meeting. Let's talk about, we had the hypers uh.
Oh, yeah.
It wasn't an audit, it was. Compliance review, IPR's client's review. So I, I did like a two-hour phone meeting, sharing documents with IPR's. And the city did really, really great, but we were unaware this is new requirement. That elected officials have a choice. To not. Have social security, Medicare, and what have you, deduct from checks and opt for IPR's. So we need uh, elected staff to sign these forms that Troy is gonna give with you to opt officially opt out libors.
Yeah, that was good to find out. Thank you. So we.
I can also tell you, yeah, an alternative viewpoint is that as an IPR's retiree, it's a good system if you want to join and get in on that. But, you know, hey, I just distributed.
From your eight hundred annual salary, you're not gonna give.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just distributed the forms, the required forms, whether you fill them out tonight or later, if you would either hand them to me tonight or just leave them in my box. And also I can get them back to John. He's leaving town, but when he comes back, I'd I'd like to have available for him.
Uh, well, I like to, I I need to get these to compliance like as soon as.
Oh, never mind. As soon as possible, please.
Not sixty days, as soon as possible.
No, we we had thirty days, so thirty days actually started with the uh, compliance review, so. And yes, I am leaving the twelfth of November. So for two weeks.
Thank you, John. Okay, the warrants were sent around today, and it also includes the uh. Pay application three of the Highland Drive and Ridgeview Avenue improvements, which is twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and.
Twelve dollars and ninety-six.
Twelve dollars and ninety cents.
I didn't wanna take Ryan's seventy.
So that's, that's included in the warrants here.
Yeah.
And so is there a motion to pay the warrants? Oh, I don't need one. Wait a second, like I, this is my first time, everybody. Any objection to paying the warrants? Hearing none, the warrants are paid by unanimous consent. Okay. How about that? Any other questions for John? And you're gonna be leaving on vacation after the November meeting. And so I saw you sent that note around, and so thank you for leaving after the meeting. Thank you. And we'll go on to. I think after that, we go to finance, and uh, we don't have anything new on finance. Actually, we covered some finance tonight, and we'll go on to community protection, and Chief is here tonight.
I have nothing to add to the report. Um, if you've looked at it, is there anything that anybody have any questions about? All of our events thus far gone fairly smoothly, whether it's the the football games or the event down at. Marriott last night, we haven't had any real issues with anything, so. Side issues, but uh, nothing significant.
You've got everything running perfectly. No, no big problems, but yeah, that's what I understand. Thank you very much. We'll go on to uh, streets and sidewalks. Now, Brian. And Doug.
Yeah.
Uh, you wanna start?
Yeah, I can start. All right. Um, not, not a whole lot this month um, to expand on. We have the, the main thing uh, is snow removal contracts. Um, so I've been working with Mark Phelps again at Hawkeye Construction to get the quotation and uh, new contract updated. Um, just in case you didn't have time to read the report, um, all this snow removal pricing, unit prices for the operation of that. Is unchanged from last year, and uh, I believe that was unchanged from the year before uh, previously. So um, hitting that zero percent increase on those the last couple of years, that's nice. The sanding and salting, he has a three percent increase in the material cost for sand and salt combination. And then um, if the operation is salt only, it's a five percent increase over last year's unit prices for operation. The way it's laid out in the contract. There's some changes further down in the contract for things like um, if there's a sidewalk. Uh, a nuisance complaint with a sidewalk not being cleared, there's some new uh, higher material costs for salting. Or sanding the sidewalks as well. So other than that, all the labor and uh, snow removal is unchanged, so. There's a resolution to uh.
We're gonna be doing the contract year by year now.
It's year by year. Yeah, I said, Mark, Marcus wanted to do that really since the uh, coming out of COVID. Due to fluctuation in material and gas prices and things. So um, he's uh, he kinda continued to say to me, this is the way the city's gonna get the best pricing, is if he can just do it each year. And re- review the, his costs every year. So generally, if they've gotta expand over two or three years, they 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 wanna markup for a buffer to protect themselves. So that's just one more email we have to send each year. It's not a huge deal. So um, resolution number twenty-five thirty uh, authorizes the mayor to sign an agreement with Hawkeye Construction. And snow removal for for snow removal and sanding services for the city of University Heights, and that's before the council.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Um, Lisa, and a second?
Nelson.
Second by Doug. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Uh, Schroder.
Aye.
Swales.
Aye.
Herbold, absent more? Herbold absent. Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero, one absent.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll, one thing I forgot to mention is last year we had, uh, with, uh, council member Herbold's comments, we removed a. Sand and salt barrel from the corner of Sunset and Melrose. This year we're adding one to the corner of Kosher and Highland Drive intersection. So just in case anybody didn't see that on the map, that's, uh. One minor change from last year. Uh, as far as anything else, we've got Highland Drive. So there's change order number two. Um, is included, um, and then, uh, the pay estimate number three was included in the warrants list as well. And that is, um, includes the cost from change order two. Change order two had to do with subsanitary manhole. Uh, field adjustments we made during construction along, uh, Highland Drive for the, the full depth reconstructed manhole. So. Uh, pay application number three was twenty one thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and ninety cents. Uh, that includes almost all the project costs to date then, uh, except for some signs I'm waiting on. Uh, a couple punchless items to be wrapped up with the signs. So we're not paying for that work yet. So I'd maintenance period is complete. That's kind of the biggest deal to most people. There's a couple of spots I asked them to replace last week and I haven't back checked that yet. So. I don't really have much else to expand upon. We have, you know, sidewalk inspection program. There's calls coming in, people electing to be part of the, the program is. Majority of the, the correspondence I'm getting, I'm receiving this month. So. And the RRFBs at Sunset and Oak Crest, we've got survey work happening, I believe tomorrow to finish up for. Utility locates to make sure we know, uh, what's buried underground there, where we're wanting to put those signs. So.
So we need a simple motion for the change order. Uh, change order number two for the twenty twenty five Highland Drive and Ridgeview. Avenue improvements. Is there a motion? Motion by Lisa, second, second by Doug. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Motion carries three, zero and one absent. Thank you. And. You've had a really busy summer.
It's been busy, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we continue to coordinate with utility companies for the Melrose project to try to, um. Sort of pin down their, what they need for the design for their, uh, overhead underground transition. So we can get that on a map. So we can show that to the residents that would be impacted with those estimates. So. It's kind of where we're at. We've had a few meetings with Paul Moore. I know Troy's report mentions that, but. I've had a couple of meetings with Paul. This is the first week I think Paul hasn't called me in a couple of months. So. Well, for you.
Doug, did you want to add anything?
Uh, no, the only thing I had come to mind is. I was gonna kick this idea around by having an, an artist kind of go through our city and. Looking at conditions of trees for winter comes and if we got any dead branches are gonna. Potentially fall on vehicles regardless of streets. I don't know if that's something to talk about or not, but I just want to throw it out right to council's attention.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's this really mature oak tree. It's a school entrance.
Speaking of trees, we had a few trees go down on the trail. And you might have noticed some of that and as we do kind of regularly. But luckily, uh. We can get it fixed pretty fast with black squirrel. And, uh, clearing the trail and you know, they don't have to take it away. They could ruin it. So it saves us a lot of money. They just throw it to the side. So, anyway, yeah, okay. Any questions for Doug or Ryan? Okay, building zoning and sanitation. Tim, do you, oh. Tim, do you have anything?
Yeah, that, so as part of the thank, I have a city board, one of the big things they've got organized is this Savannah Bananas.
Yes.
I mean.
How cool is that?
July third and fourth next year, which might sell out Kinnick potentially. So that would, I'm guessing would be. Having a resolution related to.
Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, that's a very cool thing. I know your, your group's been working on that, right? Apparently it was a secret.
It was announced on ESPN two last.
On ESPN. And then it was at Kinnick on the big screen on their jumbotron's. And I gotta say, I talked to somebody today and they said, go to savannahbananas.com. And you can sign up till the thirty first of October to win a lottery of some tickets. And so tell your family members or whatever. To do this. So we have until the thirty first to try to win some tickets. And, uh, yeah.
They have fireworks too, both nights. I think they're trying to get, work with Corribill to move their fireworks.
Oh.
To the fifth.
I wondered about the fireworks. Well, this is a big deal. They're the Harlem Grove, Globetrotters of baseball and they've been on TV and I've watched them and. It's really a fun event and they do a lot of things for charity, help kids and families and.
And they wear Hawkeye colors.
So, thank you. Yeah, that's wonderful. And then I guess you're gonna also say the leaf pickup vacuum has been moved. To October, speak of October twenty seventh.
That's just.
We might as well say that now and again later.
How many times?
It's pushed again to October twenty seventh.
But there'll be a second.
Oh yeah, there's a second one. It might be a week or two later, but it's. Because we get into. Thanksgiving, but anyway, yeah, there'll be two. And so, thank you very much. And then Lisa, I know I crashed your story here. Cause you also put on the website, the leaf vacuuming.
Well, I was gonna send my report early when leaf vacuuming was the thirteenth and I thought.
I know, I started driving around town and there's not one.
So I waited.
Anybody pushing anything to the curb.
I, I waited and I thought I was on top of things and.
I knew we're on top of things.
And then I got a text. Hey, we're changing them again.
Saying, what do you think? I think we should push it again.
I'm guessing there, it's gonna change.
I think you have more leaves in your yard than anybody else in, in my survey. But you can wait another week, right?
I'm multiple today. It's my neighbor holding it as a record.
And she's got trick and, trick or treat on the website. Which is. I don't want to steal your thunder here.
You all know, it's the same every year.
It's the thirty first.
Thirty first. Five thirty to eight or until you eat all your kings.
Yeah. So you, yeah, it's on a Friday. And so, and we're the same times as Iowa City. So, and then you wrote about the election and the home football game regulations and the sidewalk repair program. That's what she's, sign up ordinances.
Should fall Friday, October thirty first, isn't it?
Yeah.
That is Friday. What do I have? Tuesdays? All right. Nobody reads it.
This is such a reversal of, you noticing something.
Wonderful. You do a wonderful job. And, uh, yeah, so that's her report. Thank you very much. Uh, so we have any announcements other than remember. The week of October twenty seventh is the first leaf vacuuming. And so have your leaves out by seven AM on Monday.
Um, other announcement, tree board will be planning, will have four trees planted in the right of way next week. And I just, I can't remember the addresses.
Oh, yeah, I have that.
On tiny, there, it's in tiny print.
Yeah, I actually see that.
That explains it.
Yeah.
It might be easier to read.
Do you know what the?
Oh, no, it was an email.
They, they, whatever they, they asked the owners and whatever they selected.
Locations are two seventeen Kosher, twenty three Olive Court, fourteen oh seven Oak Crest and two twenty six Mahaska. Behind the house on Sunset.
Yeah.
And.
I know they had their approved tree list and they went through that and brought gave those choices.
Twenty six Mahaska is the one where the Arbor Vita were before and those were removed and then Curtis from the tree board. Worked with the, worked with the, like Katie, the property owner to, to get more appropriate selection there.
Yeah.
That's very nice.
Yes.
Thank you for that reminder, Mike. Is there anything else anybody wanted to say? Is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned by unanimous consent.